Okay, great. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is called to order. We have seven members present, six members in person, and one on the phone, and therefore we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved. Thank you.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we have had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the October 5th, 2021 minutes as presented?
I shall move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. Johnson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, there being none, the motion is approved. And just like that, we are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Good evening, board members. To all of our team members, and parents, and scholars, all of those who've joined us this evening, we're pleased to begin with our usual highlights from various events around Jackson Public Schools. And I'll let the team take it away.
The Mississippi Department of Education recently announced the members of the state superintendent's Student Advisory Council. We are proud to announce that five JPS high school students are among the honorees. They are Chantilly Braddock of Probine High School, Chaz Himenas, Forest Hill High School, Dorian Hines of Murrah High School, Jasmine Taylor of Callaway High School, and Kelsey Williams of JPS Tugulu Early College. Congratulations, scholars. Thank you, Junior League of Jackson, for your generous donation of nearly $98,000 in teacher mini-grants.
I just want to say, echo what you said about how exciting it is to see these grant dollars at work. We understand what the pandemic has done to our education system and to our educators. And it was truly heartwarming to see the resilience and the creativity that our teachers showed in these grant applications.
To have each year almost $100,000 awarded to our school district in grants to our teachers for use in their classrooms, this is huge. And this sustained commitment from the Junior League of Jackson, again, I can't say enough about it. And what that signals to us, and what it signals to the community in terms of your commitment to our success.
I cannot adequately express my appreciation for your hearts and hands of an example of just how you have empowered our schools, our teachers, our scholars, and how impactful you have been.
Partners in Education and the Junior League of Jackson hosted the presentation in the JPS boardroom. The Lanier High School National Alumni Association gifted Lanier High School with $13,000. The funds will be used to support academic programs for Lanier students and teachers. Parents of three- to five-year-olds in the greater metro Jackson area are invited to join JPS Early Childhood Parent Academy meetings. Jackson Public Schools and participation with the Barksdale Reading Institute will provide the free training. The meetings will be held via Zoom. The academy will offer six virtual sessions. The meetings will be held from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the following dates: October 18th, November 15th, and the following dates beginning January 2022, January 25th, February 22nd, March 22nd, and April 26th. To participate, parents must complete the Parent Academy registration form and use the Zoom meeting information found at our website. JPS Middle School counselors will present "Navigating Middle School" at the Middle School Parent Academy. The event will be held Monday, October 25th, at 5:30 p.m. Parent Night will be presented virtually via Zoom. You must register to participate. The meeting link will be emailed to those who register. For more information, contact your scholar's counselor. The High School Parent Academy is October 26th. Join to learn more about your scholar's courses, individual success plan, and how to navigate high school. The Parent Night will be hosted via Zoom. Get details at our website. The High School Division of Jackson Public Schools hosted a district-wide college fair. The event was held at Forest Hill High School. Students were introduced to recruiters from colleges and universities to learn about the admissions process and how to apply to those institutions. More than 1,200 scholars received academic enrichment. Jackson Public Schools, the Fordham Ground Project, and the city of Jackson held a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the grand opening of the Learning Garden at Galloway Elementary School. The project will offer numerous learning opportunities for the young planters by providing interactive, hands-on lessons as they grow healthful edible produce. The Learning Garden will also serve as a means of community service by allowing teachers and scholars to donate produce to the Galloway community. October is National Bullying Prevention Month. The district's website has a wealth of information and strategies designed to prevent bullying and bring awareness to the problematic behavior. To report bullying, complete the online bullying reporting form at our website or email jpsd.info@gmail.com. October is also National Principals Month. Each October National Principals Month recognizes the essential role that principals play in making school a great place. So take some time to help JPS hashtag thank a principal. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. Please join JPS to help uplift survivors, those who are battling breast cancer, and to show support to the families who have been touched by this disease. The district's official mobile app is now available. Get access to news, the district's directory, and much more. Download it on Google Play and from the Apple App Store. Search for Jackson Public Schools MS. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools and on Twitter at JPS District. You can also watch all JPS programming on our YouTube page at JPS ITV and on our Comcast channels 18 and 19.
As always, we want to thank our team members for keeping us up to date on various events throughout the district. As mentioned in the video, board members, October 20th tomorrow is JPS Unity Day. And while bullying has traditionally been experienced mainly in person, cyberbullying is a growing issue due to the fact that our young people, that people, our society, spend so much time online. Examples of cyberbullying include posting hurtful images online, making online threats, and sending mean-spirited emails and texts. As we bring greater awareness to this important issue, I'm urging all of our scholars who might be listening, to our parents, and all of our team members who are supporting scholars, not fall into the trap of bullying behaviors on social media or in person. There's no place for bullying in Jackson Public Schools. And we want our scholars to know that they must help us to protect them, protect one another, from bullying online and in school. And together, I know that we can build the joyful learning environment that we seek. To show our support in this effort against, in this fight against bullying, all scholars and team members tomorrow are encouraged to wear orange shirts in celebration and acknowledgement of our JPS Unity Day. So we encourage you, board members, if you're able, to all of our team members, our scholars, everyone, to wear an orange shirt tomorrow in acknowledgement of this important issue that we are taking a stance against. Board members, as you know, we implemented our new vaccination and testing requirement earlier this month. It seems like much longer ago, but it was just earlier this month. I'm pleased to report that we currently have 66% of our employees, which is 2,419 of our JPS employees who are fully vaccinated.
Okay.
Which is considerably higher than the city and the county and the state. So we're excited about that. In addition, we have several team members who are now partially vaccinated and will receive their second dose later this month. As required in the policy, our new policy, GAAJ, several team members are taking advantage of our JPS COVID-19 testing sites. And so in the first week, we had 274 employees who were tested. And then just in this past week, in the second week, we had 285 team members who took advantage of our in-house testing resource. And so we're pleased that our folks avail themselves to that. As a result of the low numbers of testing at the Rowan Middle School site, we're moving that testing site to 630 South State Street, which is the Teacher Resource Technology Building parking lot area. And this will begin tomorrow, Wednesday, October 20th, from 2 until 6:00. So just moving that one site. I'm very pleased with our rollout of this important policy and excited for what this will mean for the safety of our staff, our scholars, and the broader JPS community. I'm very, very proud of our team for the logistics, all of the details that folks have had to work through, and for our entire JPS team for the way in which they showed up and supported this effort. And of course, to all of you board members who supported the policy approval. As mentioned also in the video, we held our first of this year, first Early Childhood Parent Academy last night. The Parent Academy meeting was held last night, and it was simply amazing. Parents participated with their young scholars and demonstrated just how much they value early childhood learning experiences. Our team has developed a wonderful introduction to what scholars and families can expect from our early childhood program through this Parent Academy. We're committed to providing every four-year-old in Jackson with access to high-quality, full-day, early learning opportunities, and to ensure that they enter kindergarten ready to experience school success. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to our elementary and early childhood team and to the Barksdale Reading Institute for their ongoing support of this effort. Parents, I will tell you, we just had a really good time, stinking good time, with parents and with our precares. They were engaged in activities. We supplied them with various materials to do some beading activities and cutting activities and several other things. Parents had their young people on their laps, they're sitting next to them at the table. They were engaged. At the end of the event, it was only one hour last night, and at the end of the event, the young people were saying goodbye, and we love you, and just all engaged. And this was at 7:00, I think we ended at 7:00 p.m. last night, and was telling these young people, go to bed. But they seemed to enjoy it. We appreciate it. I believe we had upwards of 85, 86 people logged on. And we're looking forward to doubling that number at the next event. So just lots of kudos for the team and just for this really important work. Board members, we've been monitoring, as you would expect, we've been monitoring our enrollment trends over the past several years. And as you know, our ability to provide high-quality learning experiences and the appropriate resourcing to scholars and families depends upon our ability to manage our resources effectively and efficiently based on our scholar enrollment. Dr. Brenda Lynn Thompson Griffith, who's our Director of Data and Accountability, will join us now to discuss our current enrollment data and to discuss trends over time. Dr. Griffith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Board President Sebag, Board Members, Attorney Turner, Dr. Green, I'm here tonight to present to you some of our enrollment trends. The goal of this presentation is to provide a report on the latest enrollment trends compared to previous years. I want to start first by giving a snapshot of our Month One EMSIS reporting data. Our EMSIS data is what we transmit to MDE. So at the end of Month One, we reported that we had 19,493 scholars. That was our total membership. Our net membership was 19,348. And that net membership takes out any students who moved or left or transferred between schools. And I provided a breakdown. We had 40 scholars to transfer to other JPS schools, 73 transferred to other schools in the state, one left to go to private school, 11 transferred out of state, 17 transferred to home. One student was marked completed, which means she met the graduation requirements, and we were able to go on and mark her completed. We had one drop and one death. We'll now look at some of our enrollment trends across divisions based on areas. And this is just a district snapshot of our data. Our elementary division has lost over the last four years roughly 2,789 scholars when you compare the rate of change from 2018-19 school year to the 21-22 school year. Middle school is down about 1,059 scholars. High school, 747 scholars, which gives us a total loss over the four-year period of about a little over 4,500 scholars. When we break that down even further by individual schools, this gives you kind of a snapshot. I won't go school by school, but I will highlight our schools that are experiencing either growth or decline, tremendous decline. One thing I want to point out is that several of our positive schools are positive because we merged some schools, and so they took on some additional scholars. So for example, Bates took on some scholars when we closed the school. So that's one reason they're in the positive. But our two schools for Galloway, excuse me, for Division One that stand out in terms of the rate of decline would be Galloway Elementary and Wales A-PAC. Wales A-PAC is down 53.2%, which puts us at a loss of about 84 students. Our Division Two, our school that experienced, let me start. Division Two, we had no schools that experienced an increase in enrollment. And so when we look across Division Two, our schools with the greatest rate of change would be Lester Elementary. They're down 45.5%. And then the next one is going to be Marshall Elementary, which is down 43.4%. Our rate of change, Van Winkle, you know, it was repurposed. It started off as a regular school when we first started, you know, looking at the data, but it is now a pre-K school. But if we look at Van Winkle from where we were last year with 55 scholars, we have increased now to 188 scholars at that site. It's just a pre-K site. Our middle schools, our middle schools that experienced growth were Blackburn and Cardoza. And again, those schools received students that are from Hardy and Sowell, which we closed in the previous year. And when we look at our middle schools with the rate of decline, you're looking at Northwest. They lost 25.6% of their scholars over the four-year period. And then Chastain is at 21% over that same period. Our high schools, the only high school that experienced growth would be Murrah, and they had, you know, a positive 1.1%, which turns into 15 scholars. But our two high schools that are experiencing right now, the greatest rate of change would be Provine at 24.3%, which is 252 scholars that we've seen the decline of, and Wingfield at 18.1%, and they lost roughly 140 scholars during the four-year period. And to put this into perspective and looking at some of our neighboring districts and how the rate of decline, it applies to just about every regular public school district. And so Clinton, Hines, Madison, and Rankin County schools have all experienced a rate of decline. But our overall rate is kind of occurring at a faster pace than theirs. So we're down over the, and this is just for a three-year period because the data was not available for this year for all of the districts. We're down 35, 34. And whereas Rankin County is our next, you know, competitor in terms of the rate, they're down 822 scholars. What I did want to also show you was that what that looks like compared to our charter schools, that we know that we're competing for some of our enrollment. So what we do find is that even though we're losing elementary scholars, they're all not going to the charter schools nearby, and they're not going to the neighboring districts. And so one of our goals, kind of moving forward in our next steps, is we're going to look at developing an exit survey for our families to kind of learn what it is that's causing them to leave the district and to see what are some things that we can do better in terms of kind of trying to retain some of those scholars, to see if it's JPS factors alone, or whether there are some other outside factors that are influencing the drive of our students outside of our district.
Board members, I want to see if there are any questions for Dr. Griffith regarding that enrollment data.
Dr. Griffith, do you know if there are any state trends that might be affecting?
Well, the state as a whole is experiencing a decline. So it's not just Jackson Public Schools. And so as we delve into the next phase of looking at the numbers, we're going to broaden it out because some, you know, some areas are growing, but we need to look at the other factors that are contributing to that. But overall, enrollment is down across the state.
Thank you.
And I think one of the things, maybe you know this, Dr. Griffith, one of the things to look at is we know that the state reported a decline in enrollment over the last year, last two years, right? Effectively during the pandemic. But has the state been declining as well over the course of five years, 10 years, as we've seen it? That's one thing. I don't know if you have that data right here, but one thing that we'll probably want to track as well. The degree to which declines are, can be attached to COVID and the pandemic versus just declines over time.
Okay.
Well, also, all this occurred to me after the fact, but want to calculate the rate of growth and compare, well, not growth, but just compare the numbers of, you made the comment that not all of our loss in enrollment has, not all of those scholars have ended up at the charters. And so just want to be able to very specifically name and compare the numbers. How many of our scholars have ended up at charter? Or what's the delta between the charter growth and our loss? What's the difference there? Just so that we have a very specific number to add there. And even as we continue to look for, and so where did these scholars end up? Outside of charter, outside of the neighboring districts or other places in the state? But this is some of the continued work that I know Dr. Griffith is doing to help us understand the current situation. Any other questions or comments, board members?
First, let me just say, Dr. Griffith, this was a really well-done presentation. The data in there was really helpful to see by school. I'd love to get a copy of it. And I guess one of the two questions that came to mind just looking at it, I'd be curious to see what the population loss was in the city relative to the district, to see if there's alignment there. And then are there examples of urban school districts in shrinking cities that are reversing enrollment trends? And if so, what are some of the strategies that they're employing?
Okay.
Great questions. Appreciate that. And especially where there are charters operating.
That certainly would be, yeah, helpful too. And I think Mr. Figures and Ms. Thompson may have had questions as well.
Ms. Thompson can go first.
Well, I was just gonna say about where the charters were located. And also, because I don't know, we don't have any charter high schools. We don't have any charter high schools. So then if they're staying in and not just moving completely out of the city, then where they're going when they reach high school levels? If they are going to the charters, are they coming back into the high schools? And which high schools? Because I see like Murrah A-PAC had an increase, but yet like the, you know, Provine and Wingfield had a decrease. So, you know, like what can we do with those schools to retain those students? If they're, once they come back in, they're going into the A-PAC center.
Okay.
Oh, I see. That's a good question.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. And I don't know how readily we can get our hands on some of the private school enrollment or get some indication of that. But anecdotally, we hear of families looking at and considering private schools for secondary. But again, I don't know how easy it would be to get those numbers, just to prove or disprove that as a potential.
If the private school requests the records from us, then we can pull that from our tracker system. So as long as they request a record, we can, over the last, I know, two years, we should be able to pull that.
And another question I have in regards to our high school programs, I know we have the different academies and different things happening at each of the different high schools. How well is that being presented even to the charter schools? To bring them back into the high schools to know what these programs offer so that, you know, we can retain those students and not go to the private schools? The Jackson Public Schools has really good programs, especially the early college program. I just can't say enough about it. It's just absolutely wonderful. I don't know if it can be expanded. I don't know what the funding looks like around it, but it's an awesome program.
I agree.
Understood.
And just to pick up on Ms. Thompson about charter schools, did we add another charter school? I've forgotten this year. Did another one come online? Okay, all right.
No, but I think there was some movement with property or something like that for a charter school, but there wasn't a new school opened to operate.
All right. And then the comment is, I think, Dr. Griffith, that that was very well-presented and very well-received by the board members. We've been willing something like that for quite some time to know, you know, some specifics around the movement of children.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, board members, or comments, again, want to thank you, Dr. Griffith, for your diligence around these data points as well as others. We know that Dr. Griffith and her team and under Dr. Merritt's leadership are doing yeoman's work, cleaning up records and cleaning up data around our scholars and all of that. One, just so that we have really pristine data and in response to some of the feedback that we've received from the Mississippi Department of Education. So there's tons of work that's happening in that department. Want to publicly thank you for your leadership and your efforts. I know it's not an easy task, but very clearly it's paying off. And we're able to consume the data and make some smart, informed decisions based on it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And lastly, board members, I'm pleased to invite our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools to join us at the podium and to recognize and introduce our new student board members.
Good evening. Dr. Sebag, Board President, Board Members, Dr. Green. Tonight, we will introduce eight outstanding JPS scholars. As you recall, we have a policy, Policy BHAA, which outlines student representatives to the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. The representatives will serve as a link between the board-level policies and the classroom, and will serve as a trustee on behalf of all JPS scholars, and will be charged with providing perspectives on students' issues of interest and ensuring students' voices are represented. So at this time, I introduce our 2021-2022 JPS Student School Board Representatives, beginning with Callaway High School.
My name is, my name is Javon Bata. My name is Javon Bata. I'm a sophomore at Callaway High School. I am excited to be, uh, my school's school board representative because it allows me to serve as the voice of my peers and gives me the opportunity to experience something new. My future plans and inspirations, inspirations are to attend a four-year college or university where I will major in space science and also being part of the band.
And I just want to add, Javarian actually is a 10th grader. Even though the policy requires 11th and 12th graders, he's actually gonna co-chair with an 11th and 12th grader. He just could not attend tonight. But Javarian was selected by his peers to represent, even though he was 10th, a 10th grader. So, we did allow Javarian to serve. He's gonna co-chair his slot with a current 12th grader, but he had to work tonight. Our second, um, school is Forest Hill High School. And you are, we can just use the mic right in the middle of the floor. And if you will take your mask off at the mic for me. Thank you.
My name is Jamari A. Gibson. I am a senior at Forest Hill High School. I am excited to serve as my school's student's school board representative because I see that my school could improve in many ways that will boost morale and overall make a ten year school better for scholars. My future plans and aspirations are to attend Heinz for two years, majoring in graphic design, and finish my college education at a four-year university.
Thank you, Jamari. Jim Hill High School.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Kayla Hasley. And I'm from Jim Hill High School. I am a senior. And the reason why I decided to become, uh, the school's student, school board representative is because I always wanted to see the inner workings of the school board, ever, ever since my ninth grade year. Because, like, it's, it's just something, I'm a very curious, curious person. And, um, my aspirations in life, I want to get a PhD in higher education and become a professor, but only in higher mathematics.
Lanier High School.
My name is Jakola Mitchell, and I am a senior at Lanier High School. I am excited to serve as my school's student's school board representative because it gave me a chance to become, to come out my shell. I look forward to work with that great team to communicate and be the voice of the scholars at Lanier High School. I know that I will serve as a, I don't know how to say the word. It's hard for me to pronounce. Vital, I don't know how to.
Vital?
Yeah, vital challenge of communication between the Jackson Public Schools, School Board and the scholars of Lanier High School. My future plans after graduating Lanier High School, I plan to enroll in Heinz Community College in a nursing program. My career goals are to become a pediatric nurse. I plan to one day have my own pediatric clinic, as well as be a professional nurse.
Murrah High School.
Great evening, great evening. Hello, all. I am, I am Ari Bradley. Um, I am a senior at the only place to be, Murrah, Murrah High School. Um, I am excited to serve as my school's student, um, school board representative because I am a servant leader. That's who I consider myself. I serve others in order to lead as a leader. I want to provide my peers and my students and my, my friends with the platform, with the voice, with resources, with aid to resources, and just skills to be autonomous and successful. My life plans, or my future plans and aspirations are to attend Spelman College in Atlanta. I would like to be a dentist or an orthodontist in, anywhere in the dentistry field. I want to eventually open my own practice, but I eventually want to circle back to Jackson, get into some real estate, and start my mentoring program for young black women.
Provine High School.
Good evening. My name is Cambria White. I am a senior at Provine High School. I am excited to serve as my school's 2021-2022 Student School, Student School Board Representative because this is a great opportunity to enhance my leadership and communication skills. I believe that my experience and personality will help me offer new ideas to the school board, also to my school. Above all things, I feel like my most important job now would be to listen to my peers' thoughts and communicate with them in any way possible to help improve our district system. Our future depends on our ability to work together as a team, and I believe we can achieve that with the sources and opportunities that we have, that has been given to us now. My future plans and aspirations are, after high school, is to attend Northwest Community College in San Antonio, Mississippi for two years, then move on to a university that I'm not sure I want to attend yet. I plan to major in graphic design for my college year since I have a passion for drawing and expressing myself through my art. But if that doesn't work out, then animation or astronomy is my next go-to since I find a huge interest, interest in both of those. I am willing to do whatever it takes academically to be where I need to be in life. Thank you for listening and allowing me to be here this evening. I'm more than honored, and I look forward to working with you all. Have a nice evening.
Wingfield High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevon Williams, senior at Wingfield High School, also a student by the president. And I'm excited to be here today because I not only have been granted the opportunity to work with great young individuals to strengthen JPS district, but also strengthen the community as a whole. Upon graduation at Wingfield High School, I plan to go to basic training June 14 and later come back to attend Gremlin State University. After that, I will go to law school after graduation as an undergrad with my bachelor's and get my JD, my JD degree, also known as a Juris Doctor degree, and later take my bar exam to further my, my bad, to further my career as a criminal defense lawyer. Again, I'm honored to be here today and I thank you for the opportunity.
Lastly, JPS Tolu Early College High School.
Good evening. My name is Seemi Hilliard. I'm a junior at the JPS Tolu Early College High School. I am truly excited to serve as my school's student's school board representative because I will be able to collaborate with school board members to resolve issues or to make recommendations which will directly impact my peers, our school's facility, and all of the families connected to our district. I'm looking forward to lending my voice, time, and talents to address policies and to discuss the limitless possibilities for helping the students in our school district remain, remain at the forefront and at the heart of every decision. My future plans and aspirations are to attend Southern University in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where I will major in psychology and a minor in education. My goal is to eventually start my own mental health and wellness counseling facility. Specifically, my work will be aimed to better serve minority and low-income neighborhoods, children's, children and teens in the Jackson area. Eventually, our offices will branch out to other parts of the state and ultimately, we will provide services nationwide. On behalf of my school family, the JPS Tolu Early College High School, we are thankful for this opportunity. I look forward to the lessons I will learn and the leadership abilities that will further cultivate in me as a result of this position. I am humble and thankful to have been selected. I enthusiastically look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, our 2021-2022 Student School Board Representatives.
Oh, my goodness, board members. Look out. Uh, I, I'm, I'm almost speechless. Just, um, thank you, young people, to all of our scholars for your willingness to serve in this leadership capacity. It is very clear to me why each of you was selected by your schools and by your, your peers, is very clear to me. I'm, I'm already proud of you, and we haven't done a thing together. So, just wait until we dig into the work. Board members, with that, that concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm sitting here just full and beaming because of the young people that we have in our midst and joining us in this work. Dr. Sevak.
Thank you, Doc, thank, thank you, Dr. Green. It's great to have students back in the boardroom. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. You know, one thing it, uh, this reminds me of, too, is, I mean, you've got several advisory councils. I know, I mean, so this is a group of advisors. I know you've got a student, could you actually just name your advisory council? It'd be good for us to just have, mind where you're getting information from.
Yes, sir. And I was actually reflecting on that as I was listening to the young people. I have a, a scholar advisory committee, um, and with representation from each of the high schools, um, different representation from each of the high schools. I've got a parent advisory committee, a teacher advisory committee, an administrator advisory committee. Yes, I think that's it. I'm forgetting somebody? And principal, if I didn't say. Principal, if, okay. So, um, yeah, and I meet with these individuals, each of these advisory committees, monthly with, on a, on a range of issues. Sometimes we're taking information to them and sometimes they're bringing issues to me to discuss and try and advise on ways to improve our district. So, it's excited to also have these voices of these scholars to, to add to that mix.
No, that's, that's great. And, and as you get information from the advisory councils, it would be great also in, as you give reports to summarize and share, share back. You know, so, for example, we recently got data on the assessments, you know, would love to know what are teachers thinking about, you know, where we are based on what the assessment said, or based on what, uh, they're thinking, you know, we got elementary teachers, you know, they have one set of students, middle school, you know, they're in school, you know, at high school, they're all facing different issues and challenges and opportunities and, and just flag that. As you gather data, we would love to hear it, too, because the closer you are to the ground, the better the information's gonna be.
Makes sense. Yes, sir.
Great. And last but not least, I'm gonna give a shout-out to the communications team. I'm wearing my orange tonight because I got the email about the bullying. Promotion week, I know I'm a day early, but I just, I'm wearing it because of you. So, well, not because of you, because it's important, but because I knew about it, because of the communication. So, thank you for that. Alright, we do not have public comment. Community members, tonight, we do not. No one has signed up. So, community members who would like to make public comments should email their request to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at R O S Williams at jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 5:15 PM, and indicate their desire to comment. I just would, just remind the community that, that the board really believes in the public comment, it's important, and we encourage people to, to sign up and take advantage of that opportunity. Next, we have information-only items. We have a few board member reports. I actually think, I know Mr. Figures has an announcement, I think Mr. Figures will have you go first. I would like to give a couple of highlights. We had a finance committee meeting last week, so I'll give a couple of highlights from that. And then, Ms. Hilliard will turn it over to you to close out with the legislative survey results. So, Mr. Figures?
Alright, two brief, thank you, Mr. President, and to the superintendent and the board. Just two brief announcements. One Voice, a local regional nonprofit, is having its Mississippi Black Leadership Summit, and I'm inviting all of the board members to participate if you so desire and if your schedule permit, as well as the administration, because there are gonna be discussions around public policy issues that are gonna be of great concern to us as we move forward. It's free and it's completely virtual, so all you have to do is register. And in order to register, you can register at onevoicemississippi or onevoice ms.org. Onevoice ms.org. And the first session will begin tomorrow evening, on Wednesday evening at 5:30. And it's gonna be exploring educational investments in Mississippi. So, that's something that is of interest to all of us. And I was at the, the second announcement, Mr. President, is I happen to have been at the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum, the two museums, this afternoon at lunch with Dr. Margaret Burnham. And she gave an interesting talk on restorative justice, Dr. Luckett. And, but while I was there, I was approached by Mr. Ezekiel Watkins, and he had me to know of the generosity of the Kellogg Foundation and others, that the students from Jackson Public Schools can come to the museum free with their teachers. All they need to do is contact Mrs. Stephanie King for the field trip coordinator at 601-576-6795, So, I thought that was just, I don't know whether the administration had heard about this, but I was just overwhelmed that they're doing such a generous initiative for the students of Jackson Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figures. So, board members, we did have a finance committee meeting last week, and there were three takeaways that I just wanted to bring to the, the full board. Ms. Figures and Ms. Hilliard were both present with me. The first is that our revenue collections are a little bit behind where they were from past years, so the administration is watching that. We are spending, our spending is a little bit ahead of, of revenue, both in terms of where we were last year, and also relative to the revenue we collected this year. So, again, it's, it's, we had a robust discussion around that. The administration is watching that and looking into it. We also have the ability to, to keep track of that monthly, and I've asked Dr. Green to, to do that so we can stay on top of those trends. The second update was that there is a qualified school construction bond. This is a, is a bond that was used to fund the renovations at Northwest Middle School, and there is some money that was found in an account that wasn't used to reimburse when, at the proper time. And so, the administration is taking steps to make sure that we can, to go through the steps that we need to, to make sure we have access to that money or, and, and to limit any fees that may be associated with it being in that account too long. fees that may be associated with it being in that account too long. Last but not least, we got an update on our current bond. I know there's been questions that we've raised at this board table about just the timing of the expenditures to ensure that we would not find ourselves in a place where we had held on to that money too long. And the administration has been in contact with our bond counsel, and feels good that we're on track to expend all that money, even if it takes a little bit longer than the November timetable. The, all of the outreach to both IRS through our bond counsel and anyone else that needs to be contacted is taking place. And so, I feel good, I felt good about that report as well. So, those were just three things that we discussed. Ms. Hilliard or Mr. Figures, anything else that you would like to add from that meeting?
No.
Okay. Dr. Green, did I characterize everything correctly?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I'm glad you didn't use my antidote.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to Ms. Hilliard, who will share an update on the legislative survey for the Mississippi School Board Association.
Thank you, President Sebeck. Some of you will probably remember about two board meetings ago, we did present the survey that was sent to us to complete from the Mississippi School Board Association, the 2022 legislative survey. And, of course, this was our opportunity to give input as to things that we felt very strongly about, suggestions such as things that we would like to see the legislature put on their agenda to approve. Proud to say that we did get a response from each of the board members. And what we did here, we looked at those responses. Dr. Green, Dr. Sebeck, and I looked at those responses. We tabulated them, and we came up with what we think will be pleasing to you. So, at this time, we'll have Dr. Green, who will give you additional information as to where we want to go.
Thank you. I'm masked for this. Thank you, Mrs. Hilliard. For the 16, I believe, questions that were asked, I will kind of talk through where there was a strong consensus around, either complete consensus or strong consensus around a particular stance. And so, for the first question, the first potential legislative priority, legislation that would increase school board member compensation. Seventy-five percent of the board was supportive of this, and another 25 percent, and I'm sorry, all these, these are responses from the board and from the superintendent. So, eight responses in total. Seventy-five percent supported this, 25 percent of no opinion. And so, you know, with that, I would, I would present that we'd have a support, we'd support that legislation as, as one from the MSBA. In the next question, legislation that would establish board member's salary based on student enrollment. Fifty percent opposed, 25 percent supported, 25 percent indicated no opinion. And so, for this one, we would present a complete or an aggregate response as no opinion, since we were in different places as a board. Board plus superintendent. For the legislature, or legislation that would require all school board members to be elected unanimously opposed that. Surprise. All right. For legislation that would restrict local control of school boards, there was 75 percent opposed, 25 percent no opinion. And so, for that one, we would present a united response of oppose. For the legislation that would provide incentives to teachers to stay in education, we were unanimous in support of that legislation.
All right. Thank you, board.
For a legislation that would further increase teacher pay over the course of the next three years, unanimously supported that. Legislation that would allow for board members to be eligible for state insurance, 62.5% support, 37.5% no opinion. And so, for this one, we would present a support position for the board. Legislation that would require each school board to formally adopt a code of conduct for board members. Fifty percent support, 37.5% no opinion, and 12.5% opposed. And so, for this one, we would present a no opinion position for the full contention. Legislation that would change the public education funding formula from average daily attendance to total enrollment, 100% support of this legislation. Legislation that would fully fund the public education funding formula, M A E P, 100% unanimous support of that. Legislation that would create a structured statewide approach to quality early childhood education, unanimous support for that. Legislation that would eliminate the requirement of passing an end-of-course test to graduate, 62.5% support, 37.5% opposition. And so, in this case, we would submit a no opinion position for the board. Legislation that would increase qualifications for individuals running for the local school board. This one's a little different. 62.5% no opinion, 37.5% opposed. And so, for this one, we would submit a no opinion position for the, for the contention. And that's for qualifications for individuals running for a local school board. Legislation that would allow for a salary supplement for experienced teachers willing to relocate to F-rated, F-rated school districts. Seventy-five percent support, 12.5% opposed, 12.5% no opinion. And so, for this one, because there's a range across support, opposition, and no opinion, we would submit a no opinion position for the board. Legislation that would allow public funds to be diverted from public schools to non-public schools, home schools, or virtual schools by means of vouchers, tuition tax credits, or scholarships, unanimous opposition to that one. Legislation that would allow public charter schools in districts with successful accountability ratings of A, B, or C. Read that again. Legislation that would allow public charter schools in districts with successful accountability ratings of A, B, or C, 87.5% opposed, 12.5% supported. And so, in this case, because we're, we have opposing views, at this point, we would submit no opinion. Legislation that would provide incentives for people majoring in education and/or people seeking an alternative route license, 100% support. So, in those cases, obviously, those cases where we were unanimous, that would be the position of the board. In those cases where there was a strong opinion, either in opposition or in support, plus some minority opinion of no opinion, then where there's a stronger leaning, that would be the position of the board. In cases where we were at, where there was some leaning to either end, we would submit for no opinion. I ask the board members if there are any issues, any issue areas where you'd like to have perhaps a little more discussion, or try to encourage your fellow board members to move in a particular direction.
Yes. Absolutely.
Was there a particular one that you, that flagged for you?
The one that flagged for me that I'm surprised about is the legislation, excuse me, that would allow public charter schools in districts with successful accountability ratings of A, B, or C. And I'd be interested in knowing, I, I would be opposed to that and knowing if there's reasoning why we might not, as a board, be unanimous in opposing the expansion of charter schools in A, B, or C districts.
So, I would have to say that I would have to oppose as well, and probably misunderstood the question.
Gotcha.
And so, we can be unanimous in that.
Yeah, this, this, this one is, it was worded a little funny.
Yeah.
Yeah. Legislation that would allow public charter schools in districts with successful accountability ratings of A, B, or C, and opposing that. And that's not to say that we would necessarily want them in school districts with, in a rating of F or D. That's not the question. The question here is, would we expand the charter schools into the higher-performing school districts, A, B, and C? And the will of this board is overwhelmingly opposed, and sounds like now unanimously opposed. Okay. All right. So, that's one. The other, where there was kind of a spread across support, opposition, and no opinion, legislation that would allow for a salary supplement for experienced teachers willing to relocate to F-rated school districts?
That was the one that I'm...
There, I'm sorry. That, that one had 75% support, one person voted in opposition, one person responded with no opinion. Legislation that would allow for a salary supplement, additional pay for those teachers willing to relocate to F-rated school districts?
I have heard of districts that were, had schools that were failing within them, and they offered supplements for teachers. And even because of the amount of the supplement, even college professors chose to go back into public schools and work in those areas.
So, it could be a great...
In low-wealth communities.
So, it could be a strong way to recruit teachers?
Absolutely.
Upon reflection, board members, is there, is there, is there, does there remain strong opposition to the salary supplement for teachers going to F-rated districts? Is there strong, is there anyone in strong opposition?
I'll just, I'll just speak. I, I supported this, one, because I actually think we should compensate teachers more for just the myriad of challenges that they may need to, I just think it's harder. I mean, I'll just say it like that. And so, we should, that should be reflected in the salary. And I think the state should pay for it.
Hearing no, hearing no further opposition, we can submit a response on behalf of the board in support of this legislation for salary supplements for teachers willing to relocate to F-rated districts. Legislation that would increase qualifications for individuals running for local school boards. The overwhelming response was no opinion. It's probably fine that we continue with that, since I believe we're not excited about running for a school board, anyway.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Right. Is there anything else that, well, there was another around code of conduct for board members, where there was a spread. One person in opposition, 50% supported, 37.5% no opinion. Code of conduct for board members, legislation requiring a code of conduct for board members?
I, I put a no opinion on that one, because it read a little bit weird to me. And frankly, I don't trust local school districts across the state to adopt their own code of conduct. And so, I would worry about what might be adopted and the leeway that would be allowed across the state. But that simply, I think was a way that it was perhaps framed in the way it was asked. So, I was no opinion, because I feel like I could fall either way.
And I'll say, for, for this one, if, if we want to remain at no opinion, I think that's fine, too. I'm willing to, if you want to engage in a little more discussion, that's fine. If you're, if you're good with us going with no opinion, I'm totally good with that.
I think it would be helpful for us to say that this is a survey that is being done by all of the districts in Mississippi. Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry. We should have stated that, or restated that at the beginning. This survey is being taken by all of the boards, discussed and submitted not only by individual board members, but as a, as a board submitted, submitting one compiled survey. And so, though, I believe 144 or so districts around the state submitting these to support MSBA's legislative agenda.
And one other comment, Dr. Green. You know, it doesn't mean that the legislature is going to listen to any of this, because there are things that are on here that I remember from last year, which they never considered. But that doesn't mean that we should forego exercising our rights.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Board members, are we feeling pretty good with where we've landed with the survey? And with the two kind of amendments, one around the salary supplement for teachers and the other not in support of expanding charters to A, B, and C districts? All right. Well, with that, we will, we will prepare the survey on behalf of the Jackson Public School Board and submit that to MSBA by our deadline. Pardon me?
Twenty-second.
By the deadline, the 22nd. So, we'll be on time with that. Thank you, Mrs. Hilliard, for your leadership in this matter. And thank you, board members, for your responsiveness. And of course, to Ms. Williams for supporting us in compiling the information.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. For, for, Dr. Green said it all. I'm just appreciative.
Williams, we can't do it without her.
Great, great reminder. Thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Hilliard.
And for Mrs. Williams' persistence.
Yes, yes. We owe you for the 100% response rate. And for many, many other things. Let the record show. All right. So, our, on our agenda, board members, the next item is introduction of student board representatives. I know we did that during the superintendent's report. So, now, we will move on to the review of coordinator of out-of-school experiences. And Dr. Cormack, I believe, will be presenting this information.
Good evening, President Sebeck, Dr. Green, members of the board. The administration is recommending the approval of the coordinator of out-of-school... The administration is recommending the approval of the coordinator of out-of-school experiences, uh, job description. Uh, in an effort to provide additional support to our, our newly, uh, created office of innovative strategy, we're proposing a coordinator of out-of-school experiences to be hired to support the execution and monitoring of all of our after-school and summer school, uh, district-wide initiatives that are led by this office. This will help the district provide additional support to increase the overall quality of programming for after-school and summer school initiatives. The individual will be responsible for providing coordination and administrative support to the executive director of innovative strategy. Um, this is a position that will be funded, uh, fully through this year and next, um, through Hewlett grant, uh, funds that we secured and have shared with the board.
Great, thank you, Dr. Cormack. Board members, are there any questions? Great, thank you. Um, next we will move to the review of policy, board policy amendment recommendations, policies JDL and JBL. Uh, and Attorney Moore, our deputy general counsel, will present this information.
Good evening. Board President, Dr. Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. The Office of the General Counsel recommends that the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees adopt the recommendations related to the amendment of policies JDL, first aid for emergencies, and JBL, minimum school day, school attendance, tardiness, and excuses.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Great, thank you, Attorney Moore.
Thank you.
Next, we have information action items. Uh, the first will be the approval of the agreement between the Willowood Development Center and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Bingham-Gibbs will present this information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Office of Exceptional Education Services is submitting for review and action the collaborative agreement between Jackson Public School District and Willowood Developmental Center. The purpose is to facilitate a cooperative working agreement to assist scholars with disabilities to make a seamless transition from Willowood Developmental Center preschool program into JPS classrooms and from JPS classrooms as, when they exit or graduate into the Willowood Developmental Center adult programs.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham-Gibbs. Um, board members, are there any questions? Hearing none, uh, is there a motion to approve information action item A?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luck has moved, Ms. Hilliard seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we will move on to, oh, that was an information-only item that we just took action on.
No.
Oh, I'm looking at...
It was an action item.
I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Okay, that's, that's, that's all.
You didn't mind?
No, I can, I'll run it off of here. I am looking at the wrong one. I don't see that's... I'm sorry, I'm, I'm behind. I've got the right agenda. I'm, I'm just moving slow. Thank you, Attorney Turner. Um, next we will move on to the approval of monthly, the monthly financial report for the month of, end September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Apologies to, uh, the team that prepares the agenda.
Good evening.
President, Dr. Sebag, board members, Superintendent Dr. Green, colleagues, team JPS. Um, this evening, the administration is recommending that the board approves the, uh, month of financial report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. The month of financial report consists of four reports, the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation, and the cash flow report. A few highlights from the, um, financials. On the statement of fund balance, the district maintenance, our fund, eleven-twenty, page three of eight, is, um, in preliminary fund balance as of nine-thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, was ten million, seven fifty-eight, nine fifty-five-oh-two, as compared to nine-thirty for twenty-twenty, with, uh, fifteen million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine fifty-four, thirty-five. This is approximately about a twenty-nine percent decrease. As Dr. Sebag has mentioned before, we'll, this is slightly behind, uh, in the revenue and expenditures for this period of time. Uh, child attrition is always, um, significantly going forward with their balance at this time. Title one has a, um, a negative fund balance, but of course, that's due to the timing of the jardines for, um, this time of the month, for missing part of education. Um, the limited tax notes dealing with, uh, fund forty-nine-oh-eight and forty-nine-fourteen, they have, um, a negative balance as well due to our tax, our arm taxes, our collections for that. On the budget status report, um, the revenue at this point, Joe's fourteen-point-five-six, fifty-six percent of revenue collected at this point, and we have fifteen-point-twenty-nine, uh, at this time last year. Statement of expenditures, we have nineteen-point-twenty-eight, uh, currently during this time last year, we were at seventeen-point-six-four percent. The bank reconciliations, all accounts, uh, were reconciled in a timely manner, uh, for the period ending August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. Um, the cash flow, cash flow shows, um, a positive cash ba, cash balance as of September, as it did in September of twenty-twenty. Um, also, as you would notice in the cash flow report that you all have, that going forward in October, this is one of our challenging months, so upcoming, the, in the next board meeting, we will be, um, bringing forward a, uh, tax anticipation note that, um, the district does do every year around this time, uh, uh, for the month of November, that we will be presenting to the board. And as some of you may or may not know, that's a note that the, a loan that the district does take out at, uh, this, during this particular time for our cash flow challenges. So we will bring it forward during that time. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Uh, board members, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the information action item B?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Luck has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Uh, there being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Mrs. Purnell. Next, we have the agreement between VFA Inc. and the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Albright will present this information.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sebag, Dr. Green, board members, colleagues. Uh, tonight, I present to you the Jackson Public School Administration recommended approval of professional services contract to perform a facilities condition assessment of all the active schools in the Jackson Public School District. Our request for, for proposal was advertised, five firms and vendors responded out of the eight that attended the pre-bid conference. All but one responded to all areas of the specifications with expert and high-quality proposals. Of the four remaining, VFA Inc. was found not only to have the highest quality proposal and demonstrated the greatest expertise and experience, but provided the services at the best value and lowest cost based on a standard price per square foot of the active school facilities. This award is funded through the ESER II funding, and at this time, I would also like to, uh, express my sincere appreciation to Attorney Turner for the incredible work that she did in bringing this to a contract that truly benefits the district. Are there questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Albright. Board members, are there any questions?
Ye, yes, sir, Mr. President, I think I have four. Uh, and just kind of help me understand.
Is this the same kind of, uh, company when we closed, uh, Watkins Elementary School
and it came up rated, uh, sick building? Uh, is that, is that the same thing?
This, this company, um, will go through each one of our facilities with an engineering team to assess, um, not just a specific piece, but every aspect of mechanicals, the, um, exterior envelope, windows, doors, floors, roofs, plumbing, electrical, everything in each one of those active facilities, and come up with what's called a facility condition index, which rates the building according to industry standards. But it also will give us the capability to prioritize those repairs that need to be done most urgently. So a five-to-ten-year, um, budget for our buildings to be able to not only use ESER funds, but our capital funds on an annual basis to best use.
And the, uh, second one is how, how in your opinion, uh, do you think that this is going to impact, uh, what we've been kind of vetting around the comprehensive land use study?
I don't know that it directly relates to the land use study, but what it does is give us the information we need to better prioritize the use of the ESER funds for our active schools. So we won't be doing an assessment of closed schools or sixteen-section properties, um, because we're using ESER funds, but we will be providing, um, a full assessment of the, the long-term viability of the schools that we have remaining active.
And the third question is, uh, and I can combine three and four, uh, did, uh, Mr. Decker in the Duval Decker firm offer this, uh, when the superintendent in his report talked about them doing a land use study that many of us as board members didn't, uh, quite know all what it was going to be involved in, uh, and did it duplicate, uh, any of that effort?
No, typically in a, in a land use study, you would not do, um, a facility condition assessment. It would be more focused on what are the developmental possibilities for that land as opposed to what are the conditions necessarily of the facilities that are already existing on those properties?
But as we understood, and this is just a closing comment, is, is it, is at least I have come to understand, a land use study, it's a kind of roadmap as to how to better use, uh, the properties that we have, whether they are bequitted properties or sixteen-section properties, or properties that actually have school buildings on them. Uh, it's a roadmap as to how to get the best advantage out of, uh, these properties in the years going forward.
That's absolutely correct, yes, sir. But they are not duplicative.
Can I just add to, to, to that? I appreciate, um, Mr. Figgers' question, and, um, so a couple of things. One, we're, we're, as you've heard from Mr. Albright and, and as you see in this item here, um, we're seeking to, uh, better understand, prioritize, and inform decision-making around ESER dollars and any other dollars that we're investing in buildings. Um, where are there more urgent issues, um, and, and that sort of thing, as, as again, Mr. Albright has already stated. Um, we haven't been, we've been, and we've been looking at the two, I guess, questions or, or issues a bit separately. The buildings that we're operating in, and so how, how, um, what shape is this building in, and what do we need to do to, to maintain it, which is frankly not something we've done so, so well over the years in our buildings. We've addressed them when there's an urgent need, but the maintenance, um, from year to year, we've, we've, you know, not been so great at that. And so what decisions can be made and informed, um, through this kind of a study on those buildings, but separating out, um, um, rightly or wrongly, the discussions that we've had around, um, sixteen-section property and shuttered buildings? Now, we could absolutely, um, I mean, it would change the scope of this work, um, but we could do, uh, uh, an assessment of the facilities, the buildings, on shuttered properties. Um, but I, I mean, we haven't contemplated that, and I think largely because, um, you know, any development or opportunity, sale, et cetera, you know, you, you want to try to maximize the sale and, and limit any investments that you make before the sale. And so we simply have not considered what we might do to, um, improve shuttered properties or, or, um, sixteen-section land. Um, and so I think together, all of this information certainly helps to, to paint, um, a, a picture of kind of the, the, um, kind of the conditions of our, um, properties writ large, but less so the buildings on shuttered properties. As we, as we prepare to come back to you, um, soon, actually, um, with some information on how, um, uh, one vendor, one, one provider might engage in the, um, land use study, um, perhaps at that point, you, you, you direct us or you tell us, hey, we want to know more about the condition of the buildings, for example, um, on some of the shuttered properties. And, and we have more of that built into that study. But again, we've been looking at this, just to kind of drive this home, we've been looking at them as somewhat separate in that we're living in these buildings, and so what do we need to do to keep them livable, keep them comfortable, um, maintain them as operational buildings, and then looking at the others, less so, and how can we live in them, but what are the opportunities to use them for good things for good people and, um, development and whatever else, other opportunities that exist? Does that, I hope that doesn't further confuse, I hope that, um, that, that at least outlines our thinking as we've approached the, kind of the two bodies of work. How do, what do we need to know about the buildings that we're living in so that we can continue to live in them, or whatever other decisions we need to make about them? And for the properties that we maintain, sixteen-section and shuttered properties, what are the opportunities to utilize those? Sale, lease, develop, operate more programming there, whatever the options may be? What are those opportunities? Does that, does that help?
Uh, it does help, and I do appreciate, uh, your commentary and the diligence that Attorney Turner did, uh, that Mr. Albright saluted. But what was dancing through my mind as I looked through this was, and especially after Dr. Griffith's report, uh, we're going to face in the future some issues regarding properties that are already school, student occupied.
Yes, sir.
And in order to do the best thing for the district, and because as Dr. Sebag raised, with what may be the census data that's going to show a decline in population again in Jackson, we're going to really face some issues that we're going to have to seriously consider, and, and we may not face it under this board's, uh, administration. There may be another board, or maybe another two boards, uh, that will have to face it, but the great contribution that we can make, being the good stewards that we want to be... the great contribution that we can make, being the good stewards that we want to be, is to have some sort of roadmap.
Yes, sir.
How to make the best decision.
Yes, sir. And so one of the things, I mean, again, we haven't completely outlined what the land use study will look at and, and all the, the scope of that work. I mean, obviously it would likely impact the cost, but perhaps that's to include, that should include properties that we're currently operating in. As we think about, you know, proximity and opportunities for development in a, in a shuttered property or 16-section land, is there something that we're operating, a, a property that we're operating in that could be impacted by that potential development or lease or whatever option we take on? So, so all that to say, kind of to your point, there may be a way to think more broadly, not just at the vacant, unused properties, but all of the properties across the district as we're thinking about opportunities in an area, in a neighborhood of a particular type. So I, I don't just, I, I actually absolutely agree with what you've said. We'll absolutely have some decisions to make. Our hope, our plan is that we'll have some information to support some pathway that we take going forward with the facilities, condition study, as well as the land use study that, that we, that we engage in.
Yes, sir. And so to the, to the points that you're putting out for consideration, this study will also help to inform that, but from a different perspective. You'll look at it more from the cost of retaining and the cost of improving as opposed to the development potential of those facilities.
I can, I can keep going, but in the interest of time, I think I've stated for the record what, in a general way, what my position is. And I respect what you say, Honorable Superintendent, and, and your staff. But however, and I'll just leave it open ended like that.
Thank you, Mr. Figuers. Board members, are there any other questions?
I'm curious as to.
Dr. Harrison?
Yes, thank you. I do have a, a question, a request. Really, I, I appreciate this work and, and kudos to Attorney Turner as well. But I hopefully plan, as we're doing this study, have a definite time that the board will get reports of what is it, where we are in the process and what we're doing and what's looking promising and what's giving problems. It, it, you know, maybe every quarter or something, just to keep us apprised, because there is this delicate balance between all of the different plates we're trying to spin and keep up, the land used and our buildings that are already shuttered, and then a deeper dive into understanding the quality and strength of our current building. And we've got to figure out a way to think through all of those simultaneously so we don't end up heavy weighted and committed to one something that, that pulls us away from our most high goal that we might have had. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll make sure that for both studies, both the facility condition assessment and the land use study, that we have periodic reports back to this board on either the progress or specific findings that could be of, of relevance at that particular point in time that really need to be brought to the, to the board's attention.
Mr. Albright, you want to reiterate the timing for the facilities condition study?
Okay, so it is ESER funded, and at this point, we don't have the ESER II funding released, but I still plan to work with the contractor so that as soon as we have that funding, we have a kickoff meeting. And typically for this number of buildings that, that Jackson Public Schools has, it will take about six to eight months to complete this, but they will give us updates as we go along. What we won't be able to do is have a prioritized budget, capital budget laid out until the, the entire assessment is complete.
Does that, does that help Dr. Harrison with just kind of thinking about the timing and, and, and when we could potentially come back with updates?
It does. I think we have something to report to, and this may be so far from reaching, but you know, we're, we're doing the bond referendum. Is, is any of the work that's gone on through our bond fund, some have, may have some kind of overlay or tension or conflict or all this kind of work together where, in terms of where money needs to be spent?
Yes, ma'am. That'll be factored into the facility if it currently exists or as it's planned. So potentially by the time they start some of the construction on using bond funding will not have been completed, but we, we will at least know what systems and assets are going to be put in place. We can use that to recalculate what's called the age of the facility from the standpoint of its useful life, and then from that can look at what other systems, life expectancy is based on that assessment.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, that's what I was thinking. That'd be very helpful and have it regularly scheduled on our board calendar, however it best works to be scheduled.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of that.
So I have a question. Was something like this that we're, that you're recommending tonight done before the bond issue?
There was one done in 2017, and because I wasn't here at the time, I don't know whether any of that information was used in developing the bond fact sheet, I would like to think that it was, at least for the initial information to go to the public and communities of interest.
All right. So we, you've mentioned ESER funds a couple of times, and I know that ESER funds are paying for this study, but I'm also wondering, will this study be able to inform how we spend ESER money in buildings in terms of improvements?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's one of the reasons we want to do this, so that we know specifically where, where we have the opportunities to make the greatest advances in quality of life learning facilities and healthy buildings.
And is that time limited? Are the funds time limited?
ESER II, I believe, is 2023.
So then we would get this study and we would immediately?
We can, as, as we gain information, we can immediately roll that into our projects for, or our plan for projects for ESER II and ESER III.
But, but again, the, the point is, so absolutely want to use this and, and want to position this study to inform ESER, additional ESER funding of building enhancements. But it's not just for that. We want to make sure that this also sets us up for any future investments that we make in buildings, just so we have a, a roadmap, just so we have a roadmap for maintenance, improvement, et cetera. Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I don't want to pre suppose, but, you know, if, if down the road, there's a, an ask for an addition, another bond, or some other specific body of work, we've got some data to, to inform that.
Well, I, I think what I'm interested in is how this would help us maximize, you know, improvements, how, you know, we've been in this pandemic, you know, we've had all these things that happen, and how can this set us further down the road? And that's, that's the basis of my question. How does this put us ahead?
Well, and that, and that's why we really want to get this in front of the majority of the construction under ESER funding, so that it will inform where we should be putting the, the majority of our funds.
And can we get that type of reporting as well as, as what Dr. Harrison's requesting? Updates in, in terms of ESER funds and improvements as we move forward?
Yes, I mean, we, we, we'll need to talk about exactly what, what you'd like to see, but for sure, we can, we can do, we can do monthly updates on this is the, these are some expenditures that we're charging to ESER funds and, you know, submitting for reimbursement from, from the state, from those dollars, absolutely.
Yeah, I would just love to be able to track that progress, particularly with these monies.
Right. My, my initial intent was to continue the, the bond updates, but in ESER funded fashion.
That would be great.
Facility updates, yeah.
That'd be great.
So we, we can talk about exactly what could that look like?
Right. Yes, sir.
So I close with a however, and the however includes the public policy implications that's going to come in the future, that's going to influence how property is used in areas like Jackson. So, nah, that's it, brother.
All right. Board members, any other questions or comments? I just, I, I, first of all, I appreciate the level of engagement, both the comments and the questions. I did look at this in terms of, the immediate thought I had was around the land use study. You know, does, does this duplicate? Does it complement? And ultimately, I, I arrived at a place of, this is a data point that will inform that. And my reasons for that were, you know, on page 27, there's a list of facilities, and it's all of our facilities that include students. It's not the other, other buildings. I think the ability to, whatever direction we go with the land use study, the ability to say, here's our existing conditions of our buildings, and to then overlay public policy with that, you know, if we know there's certain things going on, and we got a building that requires a little less investment here, maybe we want it for this, or maybe we want it for that, but I think knowing what we got to invest in that building, I think that's a critical data point. I see this as adding, this is, it adds data to that conversation. And so I'm eager to get the land use study underway and, and doing it in, in the right way, and committed to that as well. And I, again, I see this as a compliment, which is why I'm going to support it. And so with that, I'm going to ask if there's a motion.
I move that we approve Information Action Item C, approval of agreement between VFA and Jackson Public School District.
Let's second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, I think I'm just, Dr. Harrison, was that a aye?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Albright.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of the agreement between Fortune Fund Thai Young Entrepreneurs, the Thai program, and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Merritt.
Great evening to Dr. Seback, Seback and board members, and Dr. Green. The administration recommends approval of the agreement between Jackson Public School District and the Fortune Fund Thai Young Entrepreneurs Program. The administration is committed to providing our scholars with experiences that will empower them to become global citizens, as outlined in commitment to of our district's strategic plan. The Fortune Fund will provide training up to 100 high school students on how to become entrepreneurs. The objective of the Fortune Fund is reflected by the proverb, if you give a man to, give a man a fish, he eats for a day. If you teach a man a fish, he eats for life. We're happy to be selected as the only school district in Mississippi for this program. It's demonstrated success in other urban districts, specifically in Missouri. And so at this time, we do recommend for your, the board's approval of this program. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions or comments? I just had one. It looks like we've got a start date, assuming we approve this tomorrow. We going to have a, a team ready to go, students and faculty?
So we have requested an extension, and it was granted to have up until next week. And I do want to note that this will be led by Dr. Cormac in conjunction with Ms. Marshall Thomas in selecting the facilitators and, and the students.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
How many schools would be involved?
All high school students are eligible to participate, and as you, as noted in the executive summary, university, professors at University of Berkeley designed the curriculum, and there will be individuals from Silicon Valley facilitating the sessions, and this is all virtual on Sunday afternoons.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mayor, all high school students would be able to participate?
100 students, all high school students. It would be offered to each of the high schools. Participants can come from each of the high schools, but 100 participants, there are seats for 100 participants.
Thank you. So there'll be some kinds of application procedures along?
First come.
She's asking, was there an application?
That will be coordinated. The selection process will, Ms. Marshall Thomas and Dr. Cormac will work through, but yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great questions. Any, any other questions or comments?
Dr. Seback, just a joke here on the aside, I was interested, because I'd love to go through this school and learn something. I'll offer one for seniors next time.
I appreciate that, Dr. Harrison. I was actually looking out into our audience to see if our student representatives were still here. I know we still got at least one. And so just, it would be great to be able to have, you know, I know we have to start with 20, but to have represent, and you will, represented from all the schools. We, we'd love to see all of the, the schools represented, and I think that was the genesis of Dr. Harrison's question, so a great, great point. All right, board members, is there a motion to approve the action item?
They'll move. Second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson has moved. Ms. Figuers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved.
Dr. Seback, before I go to my seat, I do want to recognize Holly Spivey, the Governor's Education Advisor. She was instrumental in ensuring that this was placed in Jackson Public Schools, so we do want to extend our support and gratitude for, for this.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. And I believe Ms. Spivey is a previous educator, is she not, in Jackson Public Schools?
At Obama.
All right, at Obama Magnet. Well, thank you for being with us tonight.
And of my oldest child, too.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for making that connection. All right. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item for Finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item for Finance?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett moved. Ms. Johnson seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Items General. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item General? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item General?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved, Ms. Johnson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item for Personnel. All of the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item for Personnel?
I so move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard moved, was that Ms. Thompson, Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion is approved. Uh, board members, we do have a consideration for an executive session. Uh, is there a motion to close the meeting to go into executive session?
Mr. President, I move we close the meeting to consider going into executive session.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you all for being here this evening.